We had his daughter. So I just dove into it, figured it out.
Oh, really? I'm not that skilled. I have to get M involved.
I'm not, but you know, it's getting more and more like all of our equipment is getting the beat up here, right?
All right, we're live. All right, I call the order of this. Planning and zoning meeting on June fourth, twenty twenty five. Um, is there any conflicts of interests with any of the agenda items?
None here.
Nope.
All right, none for me. We'll move along to the approval of the minutes from May twenty first, twenty twenty five. I don't have anything from them. Anyone else?
I saw nothing in air.
Nope.
All right, I'll take a motion.
I move to approve the minutes for May twenty first, twenty twenty five.
Second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. Go ahead and move to agenda item number four of short term rental code.
Kelly, I'm gonna steal the computer screen. Okay, so we did have a presentation on this and had a little bit of a discussion last time. Were you here, Jamie, for this?
No, but I watched online.
Okay, um, so there was, um, basically some, I wrote in there concepts, but there was basically some proposed code, including a purpose, definitions, permitted zones, licensing regulation, operational requirements, and limitation on new STRs, locally, local ownership required and so forth. Um, and not really sure if anybody had a chance to look at it, if there was any strong opinions, or really what you want to do, Madam Chair. Do we want to, do we want to go through that? Do we want to, um, schedule a public hearing with what we have, knowing that there's some, and see what the public has to say, and then get back to hammering out something? Or do you want to?
No, I'd rather go through it tonight and just see if we can kind of almost finalize everything.
Okay.
Um, yeah. I have some questions, lots of notes, actually. I don't know if you guys do, if you want me to just kind of go into that, or break it down until we get to that spot and then go over them? Let's do that. Let's just start from beginning and then I'll just, when you hit a spot, I have a note, I'll just ask.
Okay. So again, the goals, um, are, are kind of the guiding things. We want to allow supplemental income for homeowners, protect the neighborhood character, um, preserve long-term housing, and enable enforcement without excessive burden. Um, and that's excessive burden on the city and excessive burden on anybody that's operating one of these. Um, purpose to allow short-term rentals in a manner that maintains the rural character of the community, protects the residential housing supply, and ensures accountability. This provision is adopted to preserve the character of the community, promote responsible property stewardship, and ensure that short-term rental operators remain accountable to local standards and values. Um, we then have definitions. I'm not gonna read everything, don't have any intention to do that.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Was everybody comfortable with the definitions, or was there any concerns there?
Yeah, any concerns from anybody?
Um, definitions, no.
Yeah, I didn't have any problems at all.
And then we get into this concept of, um, something different depending on the zone. And really what we're talking about is, um, this concept of having owner occupied in requiring a hosted short-term rental, or a owner occupied, in, in basically your lower density zones up to R two, and then potentially allowing an unhosted short-term rental in an R three and commercial zones. Um, not sure what everybody thinks about that. And, and really I think the i- the idea there is, um, trying to preserve neighborhood. Um, and you can have neighborhoods in R three. It's not that we don't care about R three, we don't care about neighborhoods, but, um, when you're dealing with, um, I guess maybe a multi, the, the, the difference should maybe be in like a multifamily type environment versus, um, you know, neighborhoods, I don't know. But I didn't know any other way to do it, whether we even ca- like that idea or not. I, I'm certainly not stuck on it. We could just say it has to be hosted anywhere in the city, or we can not regulate it on hosted or unhosted. Um, I mean, if it's, if it says it's hosted, you're not gonna be able to rent out an entire house.
Mm-hmm.
Anywhere in an R one, R two, R three. I mean, R one, R two, the way it's written. I'm not sure everybody feels about that concept.
Right. I don't hate it for R, R one and R one A, A one even, but R two?
Mm-hmm.
I know my mi- my mind says that I don't love hosted only in R two. In A one, is there a way to, uh, restrict it to one acre or more? Just my idea by now is that kind of keeps it, keeps the rural ag one type concept in there.
Yeah, the tricky thing with A one is you're gonna have, some A one looks identical to R one.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-huh.
Other A one is, you could have a house on a large area. We don't have hardly any of those, I, I suspect. Mostly, um, the, the built-out part of the city that's A one is just, looks identical to R one.
Does it?
And, you know, the future, the future plan, the general plan, the future land use map, has everything going from A one to some sort of residential or commercial at some point. It, I think that was always meant as, as a transitional zone from what, what we had, what its purpose, or what its use was when the zoning was created, knowing that sooner or later it was all within city limits, gonna go one way or another.
Right.
But, I don't know. It may not be as big of an issue as you think it is.
Yeah.
Um, I think the, the bigger issue, what, what, what you don't see on here is rural estates, which is, there's a lot of zoning in the city that's, not a lot, but pretty much out near Old Highway ninety one, south and, and west of the city, there's a fair amount of rural estates, and it is limited to one acre lots at a, at a minimum. And maybe that, maybe that, you could say A one and, and rural estates, it's a different thing if you wanted to. But you can have quarter acre lots in A one is legal.
Yeah.
And I was on the actual thought process on, as Shane, I was thinking A one and R two to be unhosted STRs was kind of my thoughts on that, just because agricultural, they're typically bigger lots, um, and then medium density, you don't have as many.
So would you suggest we just go?
I mean, that's just my thoughts, and I'm sure I'm gonna have pushback from that, which is totally completely fine, but, um, I don't know, just.
Is that kind of what you're suggesting and?
Yeah, a little bit, just to help our non-owner occupied. I think this is like, um,
Just for giggles.
Quite strict, like the code's quite strict with owner occupied, and I understand the reason behind it.
Sure.
Um, to keep Parow one little and not turn into something like Heber and stuff like that, but I feel like we do need to give some of our property owners their rights. Um, and I feel like if you're gonna do only your po- owner occupied in all those areas, that's a lot. Maybe give it a little bit more leniency and move those two down to unhosted STRs. That's kind of my thought process.
Just to give you a little bit of reference, um, so this is our zoning map. Um, everything that's banana yellow, which is pretty much most of the old part of the city, is R two. The banana color is R two. So, um, if, if we don't make the change that you just suggested, you're gonna have to have hosted in all of this old area, right? Uh, this blue, this dark blue color is, um, that's R one A, and this kind of battleship darker gray is R one. Um, so, and then the green, this light green is A one. But you can see like in this area, pretty much when any, whatever is built out in the, in the ag is mostly all built out as though it's A one anyway.
Yeah, and my thought process on that is, you know, obviously agriculture in the green, you don't have many houses next to each other. Um, and R two, I mean, that is most of the town of Parow one, but the lots are, are bigger, there's not as min- I don't know. There's a lot of second homes, I don't know. I just thought to give the homeowners a little bit more rights, to kind of do what they wanted with that. That's all my thought process. Obviously, the R one, like, the R one A and stuff like that, that's your subdivisions where the lots are closer, your neighbors are closer. That's my thoughts on that. What do you guys think?
Right in line with that.
Jerry Weston?
I kind of think if R two has to put up with it, why shouldn't R one?
Are we infringing upon anybody's rights by not allowing them to?
I kind of feel like sometimes we use R two and R three as a dumping ground, basically, to put anything less than desirable on.
So to answer your question, um, Jerry, the infringement would be if somebody wanted to rent out the entire house. Um, there's a lot of people, me, myself included, that I don't want to stay in a short-term rental unless I have the whole, the whole house, right? So if you, if you only allow like an ADU to be rented in a zone, you're going to decrease the amount of potential rentals that that property owner's gonna be able to, to rent to. Um, one thing to point out, one of the things that we, we have been worried the most about was, um, the idea of these large companies that have no accountability, we have a hard time getting hold of them, right? Um, basically buying up homes in subdivisions, and then they're just rented out, and the neighborhood, they, they have no way to get any sort of, you know, anybody in there. This local ownership option, number six, um, tries to mitigate that problem. The hosted or not hosted also tries to mitigate that problem. So they're a little bit trying to do the same thing. So you could potentially say, we don't care about hosted or unhosted, and get rid of that completely, and have this local ownership required. At least there's somebody that lives in town or that is within thirty miles, or something like that that we have. And I, I'm just saying, they're both trying to mitigate the same thing. You might not need them both.
Yeah.
Right.
If it gets into whether, whether it's fair in one zone versus another, you know, just an idea.
I like that better.
I just, I actually like just saying it can be unhosted.
Or does it really need to be local ownership, or can we just, uh?
I have a problem with that, too.
Some, could we just say that somebody has to be on call nearby that's responsible for the place? Yep.
Like a property manager or something like that, right, Weston, is that what you're saying?
Well, I do like the.
Except, except we're concerned about the corporate entities buying up properties, so. How do, how do we stop that without eliminating mom and dad from living in St. George or Vegas and owning a place up here?
My thought process on that local ownership, um, I, I do like the local ownership, then you're not turning the whole town into these entities or people from out of state, because we do have a lot of people from out of state buying second homes. You know what I mean? And, and we could lose the character of that. I don't think we should eliminate that all, but I think maybe we should let a percentage or something like that.
Is there like a third of our homes right now owned by?
Yeah.
Out of staters?
Yeah, there's a lot.
Or is that just?
Um.
Part-time residents, weekenders?
I'm not.
We could get, we could get something.
I'm not sure if I'm following correctly, but if I am, I don't, I don't know that we could require somebody has to live here in order to use their property for a certain purpose. You can't say, well, if you're a local, you can do X, Y, and Z, but if you're one of them big corporate types that live
Yeah.
somewhere else, then you can't, so.
Oh.
But it's a good idea, I like it.
(laugh)
Well, that kind of makes that difficult, doesn't it?
Yeah.
So, what are you saying, Scott? You're saying based on some legal something, we should X number six entirely?
If it says, I, I can remove my glasses, but.
Says a short-term rental license may only be issued if it's a natural person whose primary residence is located within Parow one city or within thirty miles of the city limits, or a business entity in which all persons with a controlling interest, members, partners, shareholders, are natural persons who reside within Parow one city or thirty minutes of Parow one city limits.
I mean, you could argue that the purpose of it is to provide oversight, given the nature of the zoning and the use of the property. My fear is that, um, there, there's case law that talks about, oh, you know how to fix that? It would've been two years, and I didn't know how to put that on. Oh, you just push a button. Um, wow, I have my own screen. Um, don't tell my daughter. Um, so it, it would be, it, I guess it would be fact-specific, Dan, but to answer your question, you can't, you cannot infringe upon the rights of persons' use and enjoyment of their property based upon residency, uh, or living in a town. In other words, if you live in the town, you can rent out your house. If you live somewhere else, you can't rent out your house. Because if you own the house, you own the house, and you're entitled to use the property just as much as anybody else who's in a like or similar circumstance in the town.
Yeah.
So if we're trying to prevent large corporations out of state, out of country, from buying up homes, renting them with no accountability, how would you go about doing that?
Yeah, I guess you'd have to say they would, I mean, what, what conditions and restrictions would you put on somebody who lives within a thirty mile radius, or lives within the town, to keep them from?
So what we would do is, when they come in for an application for the short-term rental?
Uh-huh.
Permit, we would say, okay, do you live here or within thirty minutes? And they say, well, it's actually owned by an LLC, and we'd say, okay, do the, do the managing partners, is this a local, locally-owned corporation or, or not? That's, that's how number six works.
Yeah.
And, um, if that's hard to defend and a bad idea legally, we can scrap it and try to accomplish something by hosted versus non-hosted, meaning you, you have to have a, a property owner on site.
That would work, a property owner on site. It's just, you get, in the private world, like Sam Walton requires a vice president for every company that sells through Walmart to live, you know, fifteen minutes from his office when he was alive. He can get away with that, but if it's government, and you know about that require, I mean, we've done the whole police officer have to live in the town and all that other stuff, but this is a little different. This, I, I think if you said, you have to have a property manager, or somebody who would respond within a certain amount of time, or who lived within thirty miles or something, but, uh, I just, and, and maybe no one would ever challenge it, but I just get nervous when you say, if you live here, you can do X, Y, and Z. If you're a big corporation and you live somewhere else, you can't use your property in the same fashion as somebody who lives here.
And when I was looking at other codes earlier today, like Henderson, what Larry sent over, it doesn't have any mention of that. Springdale, I know, when I went to that conference, they said they were having a huge issue with corporations coming in. I looked at their code, and they don't have anything like that in it as well.
Does any interstate or municipality that you know of have anything like that?
Unfortunately, I, I was gonna do some research on other, other code, and I have just been buried, so I haven't.
I looked at Springdale and Henderson that Larry sent over, and then I looked at Beaver, and I looked at, oh, one up north, I can't even remember.
Did you pull this from somewhere, Dan?
Um, no.
You created that?
Um, with the help of some AI, yes. Do you want to look into that, Scott?
Yeah, I'll, I'll look into it. I mean, maybe, uh, if the applicant has a property manager, I don't know. Who's a natural person whose primary residence is, and blah, 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 and all of that. I mean, or caretaker, or a.
So we do have in the definitions, and we can incorporate that. I ca- I think it's incorporated. It's been a minute since I looked at it. We have a local contact person, an individual designated by the STR, short-term rental operator, who is available twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and capable of
Yeah.
physically responding to the rental property within thirty to sixty minutes.
Now you're talking.
So that's what local contact person is, and I can't remember, let me just see where that falls in here.
Yep.
Okay, so, um, no, that's not there.
It's local contact underneath number four, it talks about.
Oh, local contact, good neighbor policy posted, local contact. These are operational requirements. A contact person must be available at all times. Um, we need to have it say a local contact person. Must be available at, at all times to respond to complaints within thirty to sixty minutes.
Yep.
So, um, you'll look into that, you're not super comfortable with it the way it is. Is that fair to say?
Yeah.
Um, which was, um, interesting because we were just about ready to say we liked that better than hosted versus not hosted. That's another thing that cities have done.
Mm-hmm.
And, I mean, we can, we can get rid of the zoning and just say it has to be hosted.
I don't, I don't like that it has to be hosted all the time.
It's gonna, that's gonna infringe on anybody who
Yeah.
just rents out their, their, their whole home.
Yeah.
How come we can say a certain percentage of the town only can be short-term rentals? Is, is that okay?
It's passed
But, uh.
legal and, and, um, litigation so far in Utah. It, it seems, to me, it seems a little, you just had to be the first one in and got, you know, you, it also seems a little hard to administer.
Yeah, it is.
That's the, that's the hard thing, that, that, so that's the problem I have with that one. The other, the, the other thing is they'll say that they have to be so many feet from another one that's already in place. Now what? We have a big map and we're drawing on it and trying to keep track of them every time we have a new permit. We're going to the map and, I mean, it seems like an administrative headache. That's why I don't like that. And that option, both of those options are in here. I, I, I kind of threw it all, I kind of threw everything at the wall to see what we liked, what we wanted to stick, what we wanted to delete. Certainly wasn't a suggestion that all these things should be in there. Uh, citywide cap was one of the options. They, the separation and community saturation, that was that, that was that other concept of, you, you didn't want them, in other words, you didn't want a neighborhood that was all full of them. Um, and then the HOA approval, I think everybody kind of liked that
Mm-hmm.
as we just kind of read through that. If it's in an area where there's a, where there's an active HOA, an active CCRs, that we just require something that says, as they come in for their application, that they have proof that the HOA's approved it.
If, we're putting a cap on the more, no more than five percent, then do we even need the whole, you have to be a local resident? Doesn't that take care of it right there, if big organizations coming in?
Yeah, I mean, it, it does, I'm.
So like, we wouldn't even need that.
As long as you have a local contact person. If, if, if our approach to, to, to manage these is a citywide cap, I mean, we could do it administratively. It's, no matter what we do, we're gonna have, it, it's gonna be some enforcement, right?
Yeah.
Um.
Then with that, I would actually like them all just to be unhosted STRs, as long as you have an active person within thirty miles that can take care of problems.
It's a very simple solution.
That's my idea now.
Just, is it fair if you just happen to be someone that came late to the, to the game, and there's already, we're already there?
Now, Scott, how come we can tell people they can't use their property in that sense, but not under others?
What's that now?
How come we can limit the saturation, but we can't, uh, limit someone's use of property and?
Because one's based, I think, upon the management of the city and the property. The other one, to use a term prop- probably improperly, is discrimination.
Mm-hmm.
In other words, that you have San Francisco, you have five houses on a street, and they can all do short-term rentals, but you have to live in San Francisco to rent it out. I happen to own one, I moved here, I own it, but I can't do, treat it as a bed and breakfast because I don't live there. Or, uh, or, so you're discriminating from the use of property, real property, based upon where you live. And, 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 like I said, maybe there's case law on this, but the general broad legal principle is, in America, you can't discriminate on a person's use of their property based upon where they live. Only locals can do fireworks on their property on the Fourth of July. You have to be a local to fish in the pond at the park. You can't, if you're from out of town, you can't, you can't fish in our park. Only locals can get, um, you know, discounts at the pharmacy or post-Christmas sales, stuff like that.
Well, that's a little extreme.
So Weston, how do you feel on the hosted versus, versus unhosted? What way would you like to go, or?
I think unhosted is fine if you have someone that's gotta be responsible.
So you like getting rid of all the zones and just going straight to unhosted?
Yeah.
Okay, what about you, Shane?
So if.
What percentage are we at right now? Does anyone know that?
I don't know, um, that we have a super accurate count, just because we've just kind of started in here. We're, we're aware, i- i- in Utah, you couldn't even look online at the, um, at the listings legally. The cities couldn't look on them until this bill just passed. Now we can use that as evidence. Um, before that, we just had to know the people that had building or business licenses, and we only required that as of last year. And so, I don't know if we have a really good understanding of how many there are. But we can do an estimate for the next conversation if you want.
Yeah, that would be great. I would just like to know how much five percent of the town actually is, like, how many homes is that?
Yeah. So we have, Kelly, we have what? It's like somewhere around fourteen hundred households. Keith, we just did that. You remember, it's like fourteen, fifteen hundred? I know we have like fourteen hundred and something water connections.
So that's seventy.
So five percent of that.
Seventy.
Yeah, seventy.
It's possible we're close to fifty, five percent now.
Yeah. I mean, for reference, Brianhead's got like eighty, high eighties of like actual cabins, actual homes that are STRs, and then three hundred and something condo units, which is unique to them compared, you know, Parow one doesn't have three hundred condo units.
And, and is five percent the right number? I mean, that's just pulled out of the clear blue sky.
And I u- I use that number because, you know, the distinct difference between Brianhead and Parow one.
Oh, yeah.
It was a resort Yeah.
community, for sure. You're always gonna have a higher, in fact, the closer you are to the resort, or the thing, the more, the higher the numbers get, right?
Yeah.
But, but I think that Parow one should or will qualify at some point at being a resort community, just because we're the gateway and
Yep.
we're gonna have more and more influence from that, which is why we need to have something on the books that makes sense.
Right.
Yeah, absolutely.
Whatever we decide is the best thing.
All right, let's get back to permitted zones, see if we can get this figured out. Shane, how do you feel about the unhosted, hosted, and the zones?
Yeah, I, I agree with the unho- unhosted, and then having that other restric- that other restriction and some other parameters that kind of control them. The local contact is very important.
Is the tricky part, yeah. What about you, Jer?
Well, I'm, I, I guess I'm okay with it, um, I, I go back to the situation with our condo up in West Yellowstone. We're kind of in the same boat. You know, there's, of the twelve units, only three of them are available for short-term rentals. We were fortunate, blessed enough to get one, and, but there are some strict regulations. I have to have a, as this suggested, somebody, I have a property manager close at hand, and a maintenance person close at hand in case of, of issue.
But, there are some strict regulations. I have to have a, as this suggested, somebody, I have a property manager close at hand, and a maintenance person close at hand in case of, of issues. Um, and, and I've, it's, the oth- the other residents, the other nine units that are there, they, they watch very closely and make sure that those regulations are being followed and adhered to, as far as number of people that, you know, are allowed in, and where they park, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, yeah, there has to be some, um- In that particular location, though, it's, um, the, the zoning is all over the place. I mean, right across the street, it's, you know, everything is hodgepodge zoning. Uh, but, I, I, I don't know. I, I think that there should be some restrictions, especially as we suggest on this medium and, and high density, we probably shouldn't have a ton of them there, because I think that's gonna cause problems with the-
Well, I know there is a, a clause in here that's what, three hundred feet within another one?
That was, that was the, that density, or what do they call it?
Yeah. That would help with that, too.
Community saturation.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, community saturation.
Oh, yeah.
All right, so it sounds like we're all in agreement that we can just do unhoseded in all of the zones, as long as there is somebody that is within thirty miles that can take care of problems.
So, um, this needs to be dramatically, um, altered and maybe even deleted, but we need to consider, is there any reason to even talk about zoning in here at all, or not? Because if, if it's just gonna flow through with, you know, we, if it's residential and we don't care, then we can probably delete this whole thing. But, let me just, I'm just gonna highlight it in yellow, or in red, as potential delete, but I do wanna, I wa- I wanna think through, there may be a reason why we still may wanna say it's permitted in certain zones. Um, it says, "Subject to the type of rental and compliance with all requirements of, of this ordinance." Like, there may be some type of a, of other restriction, like, we talked about, um, not allowing them in, like, mobile homes or something like that. I can't remember.
That's what I was gonna bring up, too.
So, maybe, maybe that doesn't matter on zones, and we just have a different little clarifier there, so.
Yeah, and Henderson's, um, short-term rental, it says, "Mobile homes, RVs, trailer, travel trailers, tents, vehicles, and similar non-permanent structures may not serve as short-term vacation rentals," which I think we should probably put in our code somewhere.
Could you read that one more time, Jamie?
Yeah, "Mobile homes, RVs, travel trailers, tents, vehicles, and similar non-permanent structures may not serve as short-term vacation rentals."
Okay.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah, so I think that needs to be-
Uh-huh. Maybe you could send me that language, but-
Here, you can have this page, because I don't have any notes on it. It's highlighted.
Okay, so I'll, I'll add something like that in.
Okay.
And, and kinda try to make it elegant. Um, okay, should we move on to the next thing?
Absolutely.
Um, licensing, registration, um, they, we just say that they have to overturn a short-term rental business license, which may renew, be renewed each year, subject to proof of verification of insurance, tax, compliance, and updated contact info. And they have to have a state and local transient room tax accounts. Um, our other code, our, our TRT tax code requires both of these, so this would make this consistent with that.
Um-
So, do you need, so one issue we have, um, with the, with the transient room tax account-
Mhm.
Is to make sure that that is registered as Parowan.
Oh, yeah.
So, if someone owns it in Saint George, we've had, we had that issue. We found a bunch that were, Saint George City was getting transient room tax for rentals in Brianhead.
Oh, geez. That's not cool.
And they were happy to take it.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Um, and then I was wondering if we need to put a change of ownership? Doesn't mean that they get it, it will, it will terminate it and they need to reapply for again. I don't know if we need to put that in. I've seen that in, in-
It says licenses are non-transferable.
Okay.
And also may be revoked for violations.
Okay, perfect. I didn't see that.
Okay, operational requirements. We have local contact. I'm gonna put person, just to be consistent with our definition. Local contact person must be available at all times, respond to complaints within thirty to sixty minutes.
Okay, so do we need to put a local person needs to be within like thirty miles?
It's, it's next here. We-
I'm, oh, hello.
Must live or be located within a radius of thirty miles.
My brain. Sorry.
We're good with that?
Perfect.
Yeah.
Okay, trash and property maintenance. This is a pretty common problem. Require STRs to have adequate trash service to, and prevent overflow. That's important.
I wanna say something really quick. So, Nanette Billings is the mayor of Parow, and, and she sent me her code a little while back. They just say be available within one hour. I don't know if that makes more sense than a thirty-mile radius, because, I mean, they could be fifteen miles away.
So, what does available mean?
But not come within, but not come.
But is available, cause they, cause I, say, say this unnamed corporation that we're having a hard time with. Yeah, you can call our one eight hundred number and get somebody on the phone. Hello, I'm not gonna do it. I was about to do an accent. And somebody says, hello. And they say, yes, I'm available. What do you need? And we say, there's a problem with your thing. Oh, okay, well, it's Saturday and we're not open. Um, we'll have somebody come out first thing Monday morning. Is that available? Like, do we need to say that they're available, like, maybe they're not, they don't live here, but they need to be available to respond on site? I would like to have something along those lines.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I like that they have to live or be located within thirty miles, just cause I feel like that would take care of issues a lot more easier.
So, even if they did live within thirty miles, but they didn't respond within an hour, it would still be okay, as long as they have an address?
No, cause it says they have to respond within thirty to sixty minutes right there.
So, they got it all through it.
Yeah, they have to live within thirty miles, and they have to respond within an hour.
And, within thirty to sixty minutes, you might as well just say within sixty minutes.
Yeah, sixty minutes.
Right.
Okay, I like that.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, and, and, and if they don't, it'll go down as a violation. One violation does not mean we're pulling the permit. It's repeated violations and repeated problems that we say, hey, these guys are, 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 are a problem. And usually those same ones are gonna be, the neighbors are complaining and so forth.
So, the other thing is, um, she, in her code, it does say the way they determine the percentage is by the population. I don't know if we wanna do that. There's a, like, number, thirty percent of the homes available. It, it scales in population. I don't know if that helps with the way or-
How do you scale it to population?
Well, that's-
One SDR?
For every thousand? So, that would be like four in Parowan?
Yeah, like four residents.
Yeah, I mean, it's funny. It's, it's-
Yeah.
Right, but I'm just saying, just open, you know, open to-
I did.
Yeah.
I s- I think it should be number of homes, rather than number of humans.
So, trash, require STRs to have adequate trash service, um, basically when we have overflow and problems, uh, you know, we'll say, you don't have adequate trash service and you need to add a can. Um, enforce landscaping and nuisance standards. I don't know what that is.
Ah.
I don't know, we don't have an, a landscaping standard, so I don't know how we'd enforce it.
Yeah.
Could we just say like yard maintenance or something?
There was one other one, and it might be in there. You might catch me not having read it as closely as I should have, but they had to turn in a parking plan, where cars were gonna park. Do we have a parking?
We do have parking right here.
Cause I know parking, like, not having, not, I know we say one parking place for bedroom or something, but it's an actual parking plan, in case there is, you know, there's a particular one in town I know of that sleeps forty. Well, there's only six bedrooms, but there're stacked three high bunk beds in them. So, you could end up with fifteen cars. So, I don't know if we wanna address a parking plan, or we wanna stick with one car per bedroom, or one parking spot per bedroom.
Yeah, there's a parking spot right there, one, one off-street space per bedroom.
Anyway, it's just a thought, cause I know parking does end up being definitely a thing.
Well, so, if we have some occupancy requirement, which, which, this is a big if, right? Then maybe one off-street per bedroom is okay, um, but if we get rid of occupancy, then we may wanna have more clarification on parking, right?
Yeah.
And occupancy's another thing people budge a lot.
Uh-huh. But, we can use what they're, cause they're gonna show their max occupancy online. They, they're trying to show the max occupancy. And we get to use that as evidence, so.
Yeah.
One, one thing we did, rather than bedrooms, so we, we've hit this one around a lot, is the fire code, and I don't know if it's an ICCC fire code or what it is, but it has a maximum occupancy per livable square feet, which you can enforce by what the county has recorded for their livable square feet. We found that easier than the, the bedrooms. The bedrooms, we tried for a while and it was, caused a lot of issues. Cause occupancy is important to manage, cause when we didn't have it managed in Brianhead, we had all a lot more parking problems and nuisance problems.
So, is that something that you could find and share, that, what that is?
Yeah, I like that idea.
Yeah, I could, I should've pulled it. I was planning on it, but God's willing, I'll pull that and send it to everyone.
Okay, Shane, that's your assignment. So, let's just put the rest of that on hold while we look at that. Um, w- so, we were up here on enforce landscaping and nuisance standards. Um, do we wanna just call it nuisance standards? You were about to say something on yard something, or-
Oh, instead of saying landscape, you could just say maintenance, like, yard has to be maintained, or, what's our concern there?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. That, that was not, didn't come out of my brain. Some of this stuff I was thinking through and adding, and other stuff was just something that got inserted, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, if it's not maintained or watered, it's not gonna be very desirable, so-
Right.
For a renter.
That'll, that, the mar- the free market will naturally kind of take care of that, right?
Yeah, I don't think so.
Nuisance standards can be noise, light, partying, and so I think we wanna have that there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mhm, yeah.
Noise ordinance.
Mhm.
Yeah, and I think, do we, do we talk about noise ordinance somewhere? Nuisance behavior, any behavior by STR gas operators, including but not limited to behavior that violates local laws, including excessive noise, illegal parking, improper trash disposal, public intoxication, and disturbance of peace. I can't remember if we- Violations of noise and nuisance behavior will be grounds for revocation, so I think we were good. Oh, yeah, we have a whole thing, noise and nuisance behavior.
No spitting on sidewalks.
No spitting. No outdoor amplified sound between ten and seven. Must comply with city noise ordinance. No events or parties without separate approval.
No mooning the guests, yeah.
Yep, no, no fun. So, do we want to deal with parking? Do we wanna see if we can accomplish it? I mean, we, we probably need something in here for parking, even if we're already dealing with occupancy, cause it-
You do.
But, so how do you do it in concert with what you suggested, Shane?
We have it, I'll pull that, too.
Okay.
Shane, your mayor has brought this to my attention multiple times, that we definitely wanna rope this in. So, he, probably one out of ten times I see him, he's like, do you have your short-term rental code? Experience and resources in this, but he's really worried about Parowan becoming-
Who's that?
Mayor Callaway, Brianhead's mayor.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, um, limitations on new STRs. So, again, there's these three different concepts. I think everybody kinda liked the, uh, the HOA approval. Um, one thing to point out there is this gives, uh, some, normally we stay out of, basically it's a civic complaints. We don't get into H, HOAs and CCRs and, and any sort of enforcement. This does empower a subdivision to be more restrictive than we are with our code. That's what we're doing.
But not less.
But not less. This just says, if, if they are in a platted subdivision and there's an active HOA, they're gonna have to give us approval. Which, you're gonna have a couple of HOAs that suddenly start having these own, their own conversations on these.
Yeah, I mean, I, I give an example, the Charles and Navajo subdivision, that's the ski and scout one on the Navajo left. They, they have their HOA put, uh, into them.
Really?
Mhm.
Okay, so what about these idea of the citywide cap and saturation?
I like the saturation of three hundred feet. I think that helps solve a lot of them in the same neighborhood affecting the same suburb.
And is it three hundred feet from the house in a circle? Is it three hundred feet linearly down the road as you walk it? Is it three hundred feet from the property boundaries? You know what I'm saying?
Mhm.
From the nearest property line.
Yeah.
Property line, in any direction?
Yeah, like property line. Yeah.
Probably so, yeah.
Mhm.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just highlight this to, to work on. So, if we have that, do you need citywide cap?
Citywide what?
The total citywide cap.
Oh.
Should help to run some numbers.
Yeah, I don't know.
How, how long is a city block in Parowan?
Depends on the block.
But is, are the fire hydrants about, aren't they about three hundred feet apart?
Fire hydrants are two hundred and fifty feet apart if they're done right. They have to be every five, sorry, five hundred feet apart. Every house needs to be located within two hundred and fifty feet of a property.
Yeah, a block's roughly three hundred feet, isn't it? I guess we could check on Google if we wanted.
Ask and you shall receive.
All right.
I've got one other thought on density and saturation that I saw in another code.
You reached on the margin.
Is that, you know, in, looking to preserve long-term rental, or, or affordable, you know, affordability for people to live, do we wanna prohibit ADUs from STR use? I don't know.
I think we are, there is some code about that, and I think that that's, it's prohibited.
Mhm, it is.
Was it, though? I think we talked about it. I don't remember what ended up being in the code.
No, I thought we decided that it is prohibited. You can't do it.
Can't do what?
You can't rent it out unless, wait a second.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. I remember we discussed whether to do it or not.
I'll let you-
So, it looks like three hundred foot spacing would limit it to one per block?
Yeah. So, I do like the cap, then, cause one per block seems like excessive.
Well, so we just looked at a block, and it was like five hundred seventy-six feet. That was just between, like, I think it was, I just picked a random between one hundred and two hundred each.
Traditional blocks are supposed to be around six hundred feet.
I like the cap. I would just raise it up a little bit if we're already at seventy. I don't know, I don't get the feeling that Parowan is overcome by Airbnbs right now. And that might just be me. Do you guys like the five percent? Do you like the cap at all?
I like it, but I also know the issues with administering it.
Yeah.
Okay, accessory dwelling units may be used as short-term rentals, thirty consecutive days or less, and shall do so in compliance with home occupations. Which was all we had at the time.
Right.
We'll probably wanna update that while we're amending this code or putting it in place. So, they are allowed. So, what, where did you guys go on that? What were you thinking? Was there some consensus?
I don't know, I was just asking everybody input.
Yeah, I would think a little more than that. It's, it's, be nice to see, kind of, what number that would be.
Yeah.
So, we do have about thirteen hundred and seventy-three residences as of the, what, couple, six months ago, when, when, when Keith went through and counted it up.
Okay.
So, if you had five percent, if you didn't go the population route, which the mayor talked about, and he instead did it by residence, thirteen seventy-three, times point oh five sixty-eight would be your cap.
So, it's still about the five percent?
That's five percent. If he- If he did some number of population, then it's, it's a totally different ballgame. You guys wanna think about the cap?
Sixty, wait a minute. Not to challenge your math, but if you have sixteen hundred residents?
Thirteen seventy-three.
Thirteen eight five. Thirteen.
Thirteen seventy-three residences.
Never mind, I heard that sixteen...
You're like, "That math is bad."
Thought I was gonna make up for not turning my account for three years.
Watson, how do you feel about the cap?
I think we need to give it some more thought.
Okay.
Personally.
What about you, Joe?
Uh, uh, I don't...
Hi.
Just, just a percentage, it's sixty-eight point six five, I don't, I don't, I don't know.
What's that number?
That's your five percent.
Oh.
That's fi- five percent, total, sixty-eight point six five.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Five percent.
Well, I guess, think of it this way, if you wanna think about a cap, go to extremes to see how you feel. Is, how much is too much, where you're like, we are, we have a, we're at a critical mass of a problem?
Right.
Is it fifty percent? Is it thirty percent? Is it twenty-five percent? You know what I mean? Think about that. Wha- at what point are we saying, "Okay, this is actually affecting the city and its character and its livability for the permanent residents"?
Yeah.
I think it would be a much higher number than that, probably as you suggest, twenty to twenty-five percent. I don't think ten percent's out of the...
Maybe a couple hundred.
Or put a, put a solid number on it, huh?
Well, I'm just saying, I don't know what percent that would be.
Yeah, well, if sixty-eight is five percent, so double that's, uh, two, you know,
Fifteen?
Hundred and thirty.
So, ten percent would be a hundred and thirty.
Hundred and thirty, yeah.
Hundred and thirty.
My, my mind tells me once we, in, in the idea of the rural feel, we're wanting to, in the, you know, family friendly, we want people to live here long-term, you start exceeding the ten percent, I think that's when you'll start feeling it.
Absol- absolutely, yeah, I wouldn't wanna go more than ten percent.
In searching the marketing that's online that we can do now, do we know what our number is in Perilone, like proper or not, where people put Perilone as a search term, but where it's actually in the city of Perilone? Do you know what number we're at?
Number of what?
Vacation, active vacation rentals.
You need to do a little research to find out where we're at.
Okay.
We haven't done that yet.
'Cause I was thinking twenty-five percent is one in every four houses is a vacation rental.
Yeah.
Well, that's crazy.
That's scary, that's a scary number.
That's pretty, so that's what I'm saying, that number sounds a little different, right?
Frightening, yeah.
Yeah.
But that's probably too many. So, are we good to just kinda think about that, somewhere between, somewhere less than twenty-five, and everybody think about it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe around ten.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'd ten, ten I think is a solid number.
I like, yeah.
I'd like to rent a space in Bayside Automotive, just one of those bays.
What happens if we, uh, put a number on this and find out we've already exceeded it with grandfathered STRs?
Then, then no new ones, until, until we fall below the number.
And nobody else can get one.
And what makes an old one fall off?
Um, when it's no longer, um, listed.
Valid.
We actually get re- a report from Maria. She subscribes to a service, um, and I don't know if she still does or not, but it'll say how, when the last time it's been used. Because it, but for us, we're gonna say you have to have a permit. So, if somebody has an active permit, we're gonna count it.
But if they predate the permit requirement?
Right, we're gonna still count it if it's active.
So, do we need to specify the timeframe? Like, is it six months or a year?
Probably ought to, yeah. If we're gonna do that, we need to specify timeframe.
Yeah.
Just for the committee's, uh, information, the most recent list I've got is we have twenty-three rentals in town.
That's that, yeah.
Amazing.
But that's, but that is, they, they have a permit with us, and we know anecdotally of quite a few that don't.
Okay, can, let me just ask you a question. So, Sherry Lamp, everybody knows Sherry Lamp, right? She, she bought a place just near my old, my original house. She bought it originally for that purpose. She wanted to use it as a VRBO rental.
Yeah.
And then, um, some people had talked her out of it because of the que- so, is, is that still, is that one of the twenty-three, I guess is what I'm asking?
No, 'cause she's not using it.
Because she doesn't, yeah, she doesn't use it for that.
Yeah, she's not using it, and she's not on any of the sites advertising it.
Which is why we've gotta specify the timeframe. If we're gonna put a cap, we need to say what counts as an active rental that we are going to count. How long since it has been rented, or
Right.
is it just tied to active permits, plus known others, whatever. And if we don't do that, then we don't, then back to that whole administrative problem, we're like, "Okay, when are we at the threshold?"
Yeah.
You know, we know that we have a hundred of them that are permitted, and we, we know there's twenty more that shouldn't be doing what they're doing, and, and therefore, if, if we don't count those, then, then, um, we just basically encourage everybody to just do it without getting a permit, right, so...
So, on the transfer of ownership, I know we talked about that for a minute, does the new owner have to reapply it, or...
Yeah, yep, new owner will have to reapply. Licenses are non-transferable.
Yeah.
Yep. And that's just the idea, for, if nothing else, that, that people understand as they come in and get a permit, what the requirements are.
And so, what, what becomes the priority? For, if the new owner wants to apply, does he have to get at the back of the line?
Good point.
Or
(laugh)
does he say it's already doing this, so I have a foot in, and then that makes the property worth more?
Like a water right.
Yeah.
You would think it would grandfather in western at that point, wouldn't you think? I mean, that's probably the reason...
Well, if you're transferring ownership, though...
I wouldn't think if I was buying a property that
Yeah, I...
Look at it this way though.
Being rented, I would, I would...
If I'm wait, if I'm on the waiting list, because we're at the cap, and I've been on the waiting list for two years,
(laugh)
somebody sells their property to some Joe Schmo, and all of a sudden, they have to come in and get a permit, and they're in front of me, and I've been like on the list.
Ah.
Like, you have to
Yeah.
pick. You gotta, you gotta define it some way and decide.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It could be a sticky situation.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, that's why, you get into the cap and you cr- you create the administrative, we have to create the rules, and we have to know how we're gonna administer it, right?
Yeah, 'cause, you know, I would...
Else Keith and I just say, "That's it, we're done." We, we don't wanna do this job. Okay, so, we're gonna think about that.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly. My mind goes for the, you know, your non, your non-compliant ones out there. They're, they shouldn't have any place in line for violating
Yeah.
the rules, and then make sure we got, you know, and the, uh, the ability to charge them the fine, like the double fee, and then a- after so many days, it's a hundred dollars per day, that's... I can get you language on that, that we do, we, we hit them pretty hard if they're not in compliance.
Three strikes, you're out would get their attention.
We do, we do discuss that.
We have three strikes there too.
We have a two hundred and fifty dollar fine for first offense, five hundred, and again, these numbers are out of the blue, we can change whatever we want. Um, a thousand for repeat offenses beyond the second, three violations in twelve months triggers a license review for possible...
So, when I was looking at some other codes, they were having two violations, just so you guys know.
Hmm.
So, that's just a thought.
So, first of all, what does everybody think about the fines? Is that punitive? Is that extreme?
No, I don't, I don't think.
No, I like the fines.
Okay, and you're saying, but maybe after two, it triggers an automatic review? You don't notice this doesn't say it on automatic revocation, an automatic review of it.
Yeah, I would say two.
Yeah. My mind goes to three, and Brianhead's is three, but it only goes to three because I'm a baseball person, you get three...
Three strikes.
Figure out. Two here.
One football, you get four chances to make it to the next.
That's a high.
In boxing, it's one knockout, and you're done. Three, two. Think about it.
Uh, in, in the nature, yeah, in the nature of the way we're looking at restricting the amount, like, so I like two.
I... Yeah.
Okay. Okay, let's jump back up. We like that. Scott's looking into the local ownership. So, inspection, a safety inspection or approved checklist is required before license issuance, and periodically is determined necessary by the city.
I would define, I think we should define that more.
We do. As determined by the city, an onsite inspection can include requirement of smoke detectors, fire extinguishers, carbon monoxide detectors, emergency information, exit information, et cetera.
That just means, do we need to find the periodic number, like, is that every year, every two years?
How about whenever the permit's renewed? Is that yearly?
Should be yearly.
How about upon relicensing?
Relicensing would be yearly, right, annually?
Relicensing.
Right, annual, right.
Yeah.
Yep.
So upon...
Is that a burden on the city, though?
It is.
Oh.
I mean, we, if we're, if we have,
You can make candy.
We have seventy of them, and we're gonna go do an onsite inspection once a year. That's seventy inspections a year. We gotta get out there, schedule, go out on, on, we say every other year?
We do every other year at Brianhead.
That'd reduce the...
And we charge for them.
Oh, really? Well, that's interesting.
Shane, what are your fines? Are they more than two fifty? Two, two fifty seems like a low fine.
Uh, it's, no, it actually is double, the fine is double the perm- the license fee, which is actually less than, well, it's about two fifty.
Okay.
And then, there's the, after so many days of violation, it's a hundred dollars a day in addition. So, these ones are...
You think they're, they're
They're within line.
impactful enough to make people be bothered by it? Okay, I just wanna make sure, her, again, I'm looking at hurricanes at seven fifty.
Yeah.
So, I just wanna be sure that people don't go, "Well, oh, well, to get caught every now and then, we're four hundred dollars a night."
I hate to make it too punitive on the first one, especially since after the second one, we're automatically gonna review their, you know what I mean? I mean, anybody can screw up once and say, "I had no idea," and if that first fine is heavy, they're gonna be like, "Holy cow, give me a little break, I didn't even know." You know, that's always gonna be the, what everybody says on their first fine. And say, "Okay, well, it's two hundred fifty bucks, do it again, it doubles," and you get automatically reviewed.
Okay.
So, can this apply to the, or like, the ones that have been operating before requiring a permit and a business license?
So, we talked about that. So, existing short-term rentals with active business licenses, prior to the ordinance, may continue operation but must meet all operational requirements. So, what this does is, we're only gonna give them a grandfathered status if they are, if they have an active business license. If they're completely running under the, under the radar right now, before we institute this, we're gonna say, what this says, those without an active business license of the effective date of the ordinance will not enjoy a non-conforming status and will be not permitted, will not be permitted, unless they follow the process to be permitted. So, anybody who already has a business permit, we're gonna say you're grandfathered. Regardless of closeness to somebody else, regardless of whatever, you're gonna be, but you still have to meet the operational stuff, meaning code, noise, and, you know, inspections and all that.
Yeah, you all of a sudden have new, new code.
We may have a bunch of people that like, as we, that come in and, and register before we adopt it, this, so that they are essentially protected as grandfathered. And if anybody is, I would encourage them to hurry in license so that they're grandfathered. Otherwise, they're gonna have to come in for a permit.
Yeah.
And they could be turned down if they're right next to somebody else, or any one of the other things in here that they wouldn't comply with.
Yeah, and they may get turned down in the future if they violate this code, right?
Exactly. So, they're still gonna have to comply with the operational stuff. They don't get grandfathered from having to operate it correctly.
So, on number seven, I just have, who does inspections? Do we need to put that in there, or, like, who is, who are, who are you going to have do that?
Um, this is gonna be a combination of what we're already challenged with right now on code enforcement. Keith is taking more and more of that role. Um, when it comes to like the inspections on smoke detectors, fire extinguishers, carbon monoxide, my thought was, is we would have the fire dep- fire department do it. How, how do you do it in Brianhead?
The fire department.
Yeah.
And do we need to put that in here, or are we just saying?
No, I, I don't think it has to be in our code.
We don't think we have that in the code. We set our fee every year to cover that, and if you don't pass it and have to have a re-inspect, you pay the fee a hundred percent again.
I actually kinda like charging for a inspection then.
Yeah, yeah, we can just add that to our fee schedule. We don't have to put it in our code here.
No, yeah, you just gotta require the inspection, and then you manage it how you want on the...
So, and again, every other year sounds a little bit more feasible than from an inspection standpoint, if they're paying a fee to have it done.
Mm-hmm.
And we'll make that fee super reasonable. We just, um, we are now paying a fire chief, and, you know, there's a cost to everything, so...
Don't make it too reasonable, they won't pass the first inspection.
(laugh) Well, if they don't pass the inspection, they don't get their permit till they do. So, and, and, and most of the short-term rentals, um, are gonna require this stuff anyways. Certainly, their insurance company, in order for them to operate it, is gonna require it, so we're not gonna be the only bad guy saying you need a fire extinguisher. We kind of jumped, skipped the ins- no, we didn't. No, I think we're good. Grandfathering, everybody good with grandfathering?
Mm-hmm.
Enforcement, we already talked about fines, revocation. This says that the city may contract with a compliance service to monitor listings that are allowed by state code. This is what I refer to that the county has, and I think as long as the county lets us ride their coattails on that, we will just do that, 'cause those aren't cheap. I don't know what you guys do up in Brianhead. Do you have any of that software that's checking everything all the time, giving your reports?
No, we were, we're with what the county gives us, same thing. It is, it's like thirty to forty thousand dollar a year software.
We're in the wrong business.
And then when we get into appeals, do we wanna have the appeals go to the planning commission, or do we wanna have the appeals go to the appeal authority? Um, this is, so this whole thing is a land use thing that we're pretty much turning over to administrative land use. So, I don't have, I don't mind having them appeal to the planning commission. That's kinda consistent with other things where we have administrative approvals going on, like, like, um, like an at-home business right now is an, is administratively approved by, by the zoning officer, and if they wanna appeal that, it comes to the planning commission, so this would be consistent with the same thing. So, I don't know if you guys wanna hear that, or whether to just turn them straight over to the appeal authority.
I hate that saying.
Which?
How you have it.
Okay. Well, that's it.
Oh, nope, yep, never mind, you fixed it.
Sure. An interesting issue.
It is.
I think, just a brief commentary, a lot of places don't have this problem. It seems to be beautiful places are where people wanna visit, so that's a positive. The, the downside, just trying to do some research on that issue, um, the problem is if we don't take care of it now, it's just like in Wilmington, Delaware, Wilmington, North Carolina, right now, fifty-four percent of all, uh, residences, short-term, long-term, fifty-four percent are, uh, verbos or short-term rentals. They're owned, fifty-four percent owned by out-of-state owners, and so Wilmington is trying to push back, and now the owners are filing a lawsuit saying it's taxation without representation, because we can't vote and elect people or weigh in on, um, the ordinances. We pay taxes, so it's taxation without representation, and so that's one the courts will have to, to sort out. I think the out-of-state people will lose. I mean, um, you choose to live in another state and own property somewhere else, that doesn't mean, you know, you have a right to vote in both states or that state, but anyway, it's interesting. I think it's a body of law that's gonna continue to develop, given the very issues that you're all discussing tonight, so, good job.
Do we need to schedule a public hearing, or do we need to wait until we?
Yeah, I don't think we're ready. Not till we come back with some of this stuff cleaned up, in my opinion, anyway.
Yeah, I was gonna say until we come back with some of this stuff.
If you wanted to schedule a public hearing, just say, "These things are still being debated." Give us your input on those things, we could do that.
No, we can wait until it's more done.
We're not under the gun to get this, you know.
All right, we'll move on to number five, discussion on parks, open space subdivisionment, subdivision requirements.
Okay, I'm gonna do what I did last time on, on the other. I'm just gonna run through real quick, and then let everybody review it and let it saturate. Is that okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, let me give you the background. Um, we've had a lot of debate lately about parks and open space requirements and subdivision, um, rec- requirements. Our general plan talks about it, encourages it, would like to see p- parks put in, depending on so much per one point five to one point seven persons and things like that. Um, however, we don't have any actual requirements. There's a, there's a small place or two where it refers to open space, but it doesn't really say what's needed or what's required. Of course, we're, this has come up most recently to deal with the AJM annexation of a hundred and seventy acres, and should the city require some sort of an open space dedication? Should we require them to build some parks? Should we say, "We, you can pay us a fee in lieu of," or something like that. So, um, we, the, the city council has asked planning commission to come up with some sort of a recommendation. Um, I suspect that it will not apply to AJM development, because... because we may come to some sort of an agreement on the development agreement before we get to this point. But the city council essentially sent the message to Alex that said, "We're not comfortable with nothing, and since our current code says nothing, and they wanted to just be forced to follow the current code, we said, 'We don't have anything, so you might just have to pause your annexation while we figure this out.'" And they're like, "Yeah, but that could take months." And we're like, "Yeah, it could." And they're like, "Well, maybe we'll come with a proposal to you." So, they may come back to the city council with a proposal next Thursday that the city council says, "Yep, we're comfortable with that. Put it in the development agreement." But we still need to develop something, even if it won't apply to them because they have their development agreement. So, here is some, some concepts to consider. I have a fee in lieu of calculator table, and then some proposed code. Again, this is the same thing. This is me looking at some ide- ideas, um, playing, toying with some concepts. Throw stuff in, throw stuff out, tweak stuff, whatever. I'll just kind of give you the idea. So, applicability, applies to all residential subdivisions. Scales based on size, acreage, and zoning density. Zoning density is, is actually really important here, not because we're gonna poop on, um, R three or anything, but because the larger the density, sorry, the lower the density, the larger the yards, the more open space there naturally is, the more people have backyards with playground equipment, the more they have pools. The tighter the density, think full urbanization, that's usually when cities get into requiring open space. Just so the people that live in the high rises have someplace to go and walk and recreate and stuff like that. So, that's usually when cities, uh, some of the ordinances that I've seen only get really specific when you get into like an R three or greater density. Or a planned unit development where they say, "Okay, we wanna see you dedicate some stuff to that." For example, the county has a new zone called the R four K zone, which allows really small lots. And they, they essentially say, "The trade-off is, we're gonna give you this really great density. You've gotta reserve some open space." That's, that's what the county does in this, kinda this tighter density. Um, that's a pretty common thing. The question is, is what about R one with quarter acre lots? Is there any need for it? And if you have a requirement on one and not on the other, are you being unfair? So, this tries to deal with that in a, in a fairer way, but there's always a million different ways to say what is fair, based on the person making the argument. So, the way this is written, it would treat everybody identical with the exception of planned unit developments and one other thing where we say, "Yeah, you gotta also dedicate some open space." You don't have to give it to the city. You just have to have some open space, right? Okay, I'll go through it. So, land dedication versus fee in lieu. I expect Scott's ears to prick up and maybe say, "Dan, I don't agree with you again here." We'll see. So, this says, "Less than ten acres of a subdivision," sorry, "greater than ten acres, gross acreage." And I like that word gross because that means gross acreage. That includes streets. That, that's, that's the total acreage before the subdivision starts. "Is required to dedicate land for future parks." Doesn't say they have to build parks, they have to dedicate land. Less than ten acres may pay a fee in lieu. Flexibility, "The planning commission may approve a fee in lieu for larger projects if land is not practical or if park space already exists nearby." It gives the city the ability to say, "Okay, we'll let you, you're eleven acres. We'll let you do a fee in lieu because we don't want you to deed the city this weird little tiny shape," or something like that, right? Okay, density-based open space. In R three, PUD or master plan zones, additional usable open space, not necessarily a public park, is required for residents, and we'll get into what that is. May include trails, buffers, common greens, or small private parks. Larger yards in A one, R one zones reduce the need for onsite, onsite open space. So, these are just kind of some concepts, right? When, this isn't getting to the level of detail yet. Fee in lieu of example calculation. If we did a fee in lieu, how would that work? So, this is similar to how we require water rights, but if it's just one subdivision of one lot into two lots, we allow, allow them to pay in, to pay a fee in lieu of deeding the city water rights. This is the exact same concept on dedication of land. But you have to have a mechanism to figure out what that fee would be. And this essentially has a table where we say, "The subdivision size, so many acres." Uh, in this case, it's below the ten acres, therefore, land value per acre, and we have a spot where we'll say land value in the different zones. Required park acreage, we're gonna have some sort of percentage if we go this route. Say it's five percent. And by the way, me doing the rough math that I could, between three and five percent is consistent with our general plan of saying we need acreage per so many residents. So, somewhere between three and five percent of acreage. In the case of eight acres, that's point four acres, and the fee in lieu says, "That's what the value of that land is, times point oh four." Therefore, give the city sixteen thousand dollars. We then put that into our park reserve, and we use that to invest into parks, in building parks. We don't get to take it and put it salaries or buy a new police car. It has to go into parks, right? So, this is a table. If we were to do that fee in lieu of calculator, um, this has typical lot size, by zone, assume land value per acre. That's, can be debated all day long, but the idea is that we would look at that every year and kind of decide if it's still kind of accurate. We come up with that five percent, three percent, four percent, and it tells you what the fee in lieu per acre of subdivision is. And we would have a table like that that we would just refer to. Okay. Now, the proposed code. Purpose, "To ensure that a new residential development contributes fairly to the provision of parkland and meaningful open space, scaled appropriately by size and zoning density, and to support long-term recreational needs and community quality of life in Parwin City." Applicability, this section applies to all residential subdivisions of three or more lots. I think we would probably want to, and I think, wasn't our minor lot subdivision, was it four? Was it five? The idea being to tie it into the minor lot subdivision. Minor lot subdivision would be exempt. Okay. For subdivisions, ten acres or greater, and then it says that five percent, and, uh, area determined by the city based on the, um, adopted parks master plan, which we don't have. If we were to adopt one, we could put that in. Dedicated land must be reasonably shaped, accessible by the public, by public road or trail, and suitable for active or passive recreation. You can't give us that hole in the ground that you could throw everything into, that pit that nothing ever comes out of. Or you can't give us a piece of land that nobody can ever use, or something like, or some weird shape. The city can't do anything with it, right? A five-foot section times two thousand feet doesn't work for a park, unless it is a trail system that does, right? Anyways.
(laughing)
That's the reasonably shaped. Um, not encumbered by steep slopes, drainage facilities, or utility easements unless accepted by the city for park purposes, right? That's one of the ideas being floated by Alex Meisner is they have to do a drainage basin. Why not make it a park as well? And that's a concept that happens all over. They put grass on it, and it's soccer field, and when it floods, that's where the water goes, right? So, it's an idea, but this gives the city the ability to say, "Yeah, no, that's not usable." Um, dedicated land must be approved by planning commission, city council.
Could it be approved by both?
(coughing)
Or recommended by one?
So, the question there is, um, i- is valid, 'cause in the subdivision process, the city council does not get involved. Um, however, there is a new law on the books that the state has that makes the city approve. And I don't think the city council necessarily has to do it. It may be just that the mayor has to sign off on it. There's a new law that just says you can't dedicate land to a city without their approval 'cause people would give junk or messy legal disasters, whatever. They just deed it to the city. So, there's a new law that says the city has to approve it anyways, and I don't know if that's city council or mayor. We just probably got the very first one sitting in my inbox right now, so I'll check that. Normally, it would just be approved through the subdivision process, um, but I wanna check on that. Okay, fee in lieu of dedication for subdivisions under ten acres, uh, where land dedication is determined by city to be impractical or inconsistent with park planning, a fee in lieu shall be paid. Or, or where land dedication is determined to be impractical or inconsistent. Um, the fees shall be based on a per acre value of land in the area, the amount of the, anyways. I already walked you guys through the calculation. This is just the textual equivalent of that. Um, fee calculation, again, this describes how that works. Um, this does, however, say that if a developer disputes the land value set by the city, the developer may submit an independent appraisal for review and final determination by city council. So, if we do go to the point where we actually are gonna put a value in there, and then we're gonna update it every once in a while, like, we may wanna just completely stay away from that. Just say, "You have to have an appraisal." Or we can just say, "We'll say the number, and if you don't like it, give us a, an appraisal." And it, that's a fair, that's a fair approach, I thought, if we like the in lieu of concept, right? Okay. Each additional open space in high-density or cluster development. "In zones with minimum lot sizes smaller than eight thousand, example, R three, or in any planned unit development or master plan development, the developer shall provide additional usable s- open space for the benefit of the residents beyond the land dedicated to the ci- city." "Required private or open, common open space shall be at least ten percent of the gross." Now, remember, this property does not come to the city. This is just them setting aside property. So, now think of the PUD, of the manufactured home, that concept, that whole, that we were talking about. We'd like you to see you do something, some open space, and we're like, "We don't know how much." And so then they came back and said, "Well, there's open space around all of the homes." Remember that? We're like, "Yeah, but is that public open space or private open space?" Finally, they came back with, "What do we put in pickleball courts?" And we said, "Okay, fine," right? This basically describes that process. Um, by the way, each one of these, planned unit development, there's hardly any of those left that will allow that, or master plan development, we're gonna be approving those. What we wouldn't approve would be an R three subdivision. So, do you wanna force an R three subdivision to have some open space? That's a huge question. That's a, that's a really big thing to consider here, right? Maybe we just get rid of that. Maybe we leave it in. Anyways. Ten percent of the gross site area. Centrally located or otherwise accessible to the majority of the lots maintained by an HOA or Owners', Owners' Association or similar mechanism. Improve with amenities appropriate to the scale of the development. Play areas, trails, gardens, seating areas, landscape green, green space. So, I think it's kind of extreme to be including R three if we're gonna require that, but it's just something to think about, right? Um, okay. Credits and adjustments. Where trails, natural buffers, or floodways are preserved as a part of a city-defined open space network, the city may credit these areas towards the required open space if they serve a recreational or connectivity function, and they are improved or accessible to the public. So, you remember when Meisner, when we were talking about that early on? They said, "We have all this space that's up on the mountain that, that's all open space." And we're like, "But is it usable?"
Yeah, but-
"Are you gonna allow people to hike it? It's behind people's yards, or are you saying you're gonna build a trail up there, or what?" That's what you're, what that's getting at. If it's, if it's open space, and we feel like there's a, there really is a good point for that, and it's, just by it being there and being av- available, and it being a buffer, it's significant, therefore, it's okay. You know, we just have, would have to define that. But this would allow the city to give credit for those if we decided, "Yeah, that really is functional, open space."
They'd have to have ownership of it.
Yeah.
Not just accessible to public-
Right.
-property adjacent to their-
Well, and we could say that.
Yeah.
We, however we wanted, we could say, "Fine," but it needs to be public accessible.
Yeah. 'Cause I mean, just not public accessible.
And, um, we don't wanna necessarily have to take over all maintenance of it as the city, you know. So, this is under the idea of that additional open space. So, an idea to kind of wrap your head around and think about. Finally, administration, land dedication proposals and fee calculations shall be reviewed by city staff and approved by planning commission. Um, we're gonna wanna kinda hone that so that it's more, it ties in with the subdivision process, right? The, the SRC and things like that. Fee in lieu payments should be placed in a dedicated parks capital fund and used only for acquisition or improvement of public parkland, and that's what I talked about later. So, that's it. That's a first stab.
Dan, is there a, in here, I didn't see it, but there is provisions that it doesn't include streets, correct?
Yeah, w- w- it doesn't, what, 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 there, it doesn't talk about streets at all. The only thing related to that is that we're looking at the gross acreage.
I know, but in that gross acreage can't include the streets.
No, it would include the streets for purposes of calculation of how much they have to deed to us.
For open space?
For land dedication or fee in lieu. So, in other words, if they have ten acres exactly, we're gonna say, ten acres is what we're gonna use to calculate how much you're gonna have to set aside. In other words, not net, we're gonna say, ten acres before you start subdividing is the number that matters in, in terms of how much you're gonna have to set aside or do a fee in lieu of based on.
Yeah, I get that, but then you've gotta look at the, what is, that would be necessary that wouldn't be open space, that you would have to have four streets and four different, you know, purpose.
So, are you saying you wanna make sure that an, a street couldn't be counted as open space? Is that what you're getting at?
I don't think you should.
Right. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
I agree. Yeah.
Yeah. I, yeah, I would, I, we, we can clarify that.
You have to have a street.
Yeah, and we'll go over that when we actually catch them to it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a-
Yep. Agreed. So, that's first stab. I would encourage everybody to go out, look at other ordinances, think it through. Don't think that the total universe of what we might wanna do is inside of here, nor is everything we have inside of here something we wanna do. It's just a first stab to get the juices flowing.
All right. Move along to number six.
Hey, Keith is gonna lead this one.
All right.
'Cause I wasn't in this meeting. If the chair allows it.
I guess.
(laughing)
My questions were just, uh, one, in part one, or sorry, section two, we talk about the dedication of land for future public parks, but you stated that, um, the infrastructure or the, whatever it was facility didn't actually have to be put in. And then in section three, we say that it may include trails, uh, common greens, small private parks, things like that. Whoever and whenever does that get put in?
So-
If we don't do that in the subdivision.
So, we have to be very careful not to double dip because each home that gets built, we collect a park's impact fee. We can't make them put in all the parks and collect a park impact fee. So, if we had a, a subdivision come in and say, "We're gonna put in this park, which will fully service the parks of all these new homes that we're gonna build, and we demand that you waive the park impact fee," they would have a legal claim on that.
Sure.
To make that argument.
Yep.
So, but by reserving space, that then the city is gonna have to come in and make that improvement, and we use the impact fee. If we have our, our capital facilities plan done correctly, and the subdivision is complying with that, and we collect a fee based on our capital facilities plan, which then ties into the impact fee facilities plan, it ties into the impact fee study, and then the rate, then we should have the money to build that park on the space that they've dedicated upon the full build-out of that subdivision. And then, but, so that's how that goes. And that's why it's, that's why most of the code you see regarding this is always about dedication of land, not necessarily the building of the facility.
Okay. That's right. Um, my other question was, why are we leaving in Ag, Ag one and not general commercial when they both have a residential component, but most of them revert to R one?
So, I had a, I had a wonder about this. So, we do have now mixed use in commercial. So, if you're gonna put in a building, just because Molly's here, and I know she's a good sport, you're gonna basically replicate the yoga building. That's generally what we're gonna see when it's a residential mixed-use component in a, in a commercial. Are we gonna say, "You're gonna have to dedicate a portion of, a sliver of that?" Or are we gonna say, "You have to pay into it?" Because the people living in there will need some sort of park stuff, so a fee in lieu of, um, technically, if it's a subdivision, they would have to come up with some sort of a, you know, I don't know. How do you deal with that? What do you do? You know, a really large one of these things, which is what we're seeing in, what, we won't have here, but these really large multifamily- but these really large multifamily housing, you know, things that are being built up in Salt Lake, that's when they're saying, "Yeah, you gotta show us how you're gonna deal with the open space." You know, the people that are gonna live in this high-rise apartment building, they're gonna want a place. And they'll say, "Well, yeah, we're gonna have a floor dedicated with workout room and a swimming pool." And we're gonna say, "Yeah, but what about outside airspace?" And they'll say, "Well, yeah, we'll dedicate this little walking courtyard and stuff and give that to them." And then they say, "Okay." Does that really translate down to, you know, mixed use with two and a half stories? I don't know, but I think we, we need to decide how it would apply or not. Good point.
Should agricultural have a different valuation than in R1, no? Since-
Well, but when it comes to residential, it's gonna follow R1, so I think we're probably good.
And that's what I'm saying. But, why should Ag then have a different valuation?
Oh, just because the land value in, when it's, when it's more open like that to start with, generally has a lower land value, until it kinda gets built out.
But if the, but we're gonna do this at the point of subdivision, so that automatically is gonna declare it as a residential sub, split.
But, we don't, they don't, they don't have to rezone if they want a subdivision in A1. They could technically stay A1 and subdivide.
Right, but it's still gonna be for a residential purpose?
Yeah, so, when it comes to setbacks for the homes and all that, but they could stay A1 and subdivide. So, all good stuff, though. This whole assumed land value per acre, I put about one minute worth of thought into it, and I don't love it. So, lest everybody think, I, this is my definition of what is perfect. No, this was a start, a starting point. To get juices in Keith's head going, and everybody else on the, up here.
But the hamster wheel's even turning, we-
I suspect Larry's gonna turn this over and send us an email or two. I hope he does.
I have a, Keith's doing, so I have a couple quick ones if I might.
So, back on the last-
Wait, are we going over, are we asking questions on this that we just barely talked about?
Yeah.
Yeah, you just make them quick. I would rather have the questions asked when we're actually gonna deep dive into it, because I have a ton of questions, but I'm just-
Okay, well, this one, first one's pretty easy. On the last page, under the number two, up at the, closer to the top, that first thing, I'm, I'm not sure if that's consistent with our PUD code in the new Title 14. And if we have it in both places, it's gonna need to be consistent.
Absolutely. Whatever we do here, we need to make sure that it is consistent PUD and master plan development code.
Yes, exactly, so that's perfect.
Hundred percent agree.
And then, at the bottom of the page, the number two, I just have a question. It says, "Fee in lieu of payments shall be placed in dedicated parks capital fund and used only for acquisition or improvement of public parkland." And I just wanna make the point that parkland and open space are two way different things. And we might need both, or if we intend to mean one, to exclude the other, that's great, but it might be both.
And I wouldn't call it a capital fund, I'd call it a reserve fund.
Yeah, thanks for that, Larry. I do have the definition of open space and park space somewhere in these notes, but I'll find it.
And you'll notice I don't have any definitions, didn't have time, so we're gonna wanna have definitions.
All right, Keith, let's move on to the historical preservation.
Keith, just a point of information, are you taking over number six?
Yeah.
Okay, because in the minutes, in that historic preservation, it says, "I had volunteered that that, I defer to you happily."
Nope, if you-
Nope.
If I say anything that you don't concur with.
I just want, when those minutes are read-
Dave said 123, not it.
-that I don't have to explain myself, so.
Okay. So, we've had a, just a string of questions concerning signage come up in Historical Preservation Committee. And so, what they are asking for is a change to Appendix A, Section 11. Who wants to pull that up?
I will.
Thank you.
So, my first question on this, this is all their thoughts and ideas? Like, they had a meeting about this, and they came up with this?
Yeah, we discussed it at the last meeting.
Perfect.
They discussed it at the last meeting.
I think it's a thing we've got to piece of it, like, the signage is approved for 10% of the front edge of a building. If you look at any of the buildings on Main Street, from the flower shop to Barbara Jay's, 10% would be a strip.
Yeah.
So, it's like, it happened because it just kept not making sense. It wasn't like, they were like, "Oh, let's get in here and mess with this."
Yeah.
It just wasn't making sense.
And that's the meat of it, is they just want that 10% taken out of there so that they have greater flexibility and control over that.
Sorry, I'm just making sure I save this.
Even though you're reviewing this, every storefront's unique, because there's different percentage of windows, doors, you know, everything.
Usable space for signage.
Yeah, exactly, and everything looks different on every building, so. Sorry, Keith, I didn't mean to interfere.
Okay, where are we going?
I didn't mean to steal your thunder, I didn't-
No.
This is under signage, right?
Yeah.
Do, 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 do.
Yeah, so there, you can see the verbiage about, "Does not exceed 10%." So, what they're looking for is that it shall say, "Wall and projecting signs shall be submitted to the Historic Preservation Committee for review and approval prior to installation and shall adhere to the following requirements." And then, it basically just takes out everything and just puts, jumps down to number one.
This number one?
Yep, and everything else stays the same.
So, you said that really quickly. Will you say that slower?
Shall be submitted-
Wait, wait, where are we reading?
Sorry, "Wall and projecting signs shall be submitted to the HPC for review and approval prior to installation and shall adhere to the following requirements." So, it just takes out that, um-
10%.
Yeah, that 10% language.
So, the, so what, what Keith had said is, we need to put this on city council. And I said, "No, no, 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 this is a land use code in Chapter 15. If we're gonna make an adjustment, it needs to come to Planning Commission. We need to have a public hearing, we need to make a recommendation. It goes to city councils to change by ordinance, because that is land use code changes." So, this is their recommendation, was exactly those wording. If, if everybody's fine with it, or is or isn't, there's not really a lot to talk about. We might as well schedule a public hearing and then come back, and you guys can vote to send a recommendation. We really don't have to spend too much time talking about it at this point. And, and this wasn't to do with one specific, this was a few? What's that? You want me, oh, perfect, I'm gonna send it back to you.
So, is this the only change they had in the whole document, then?
Yes.
Okay.
We talked a little bit about sign colors and things like that, but they left, as it was written.
I just had a question on the exterior building materials, but it doesn't matter, because it's fine.
So, easy enough.
Yep, I'm fine, yeah, with that.
Yeah.
Do we need a vote on that, or can we just say we want it?
Just like, "Do it."
Just do it, just do it, Callie, please. Thank you. Perfect, thank you. All right, let's move to number seven, reports. Councilman Burton.
Uh, nothing, thank you.
All right, Jerry?
Nothing for me?
Shane?
Nothing for me.
Nothing for me, Weston?
Nope, I'm good.
Nada.
Okay.
How?
Public comment. All right, need a motion.
I move, will you adjourn?
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we're adjourned. Thanks, guys.